Can you please ensure your mobile phones are off or silent? And that members of the public understand, we understand, as a committee, we understand that the matter is under consideration. Tonight can be a motive, however, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee, refrain from booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. So let's move on to the main business. I introduce the officers in front of me. On my right, Beth Howland-Smith, the Development Control Manager, Rachel Callas, the Principal Planning Officer, sitting right in front of me here, and Lewis Jones, our planning lawyer. So, item one on the agenda. The minutes have been, of the 26th of September, have been on ten for half an hour prior to the meeting, as you wish I sign them as a true record of that meeting. Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence.
We have apologies from Councillors Jim Edwards, Councillor Robert Knowles, Councillor Stephen Munner, and Councillor Christian Hesler.
But quality remains. Disclosure of interests, Emma?
None before the meeting, but I believe Haysmere Town Councilors declare a non-perpetual interest in the application.
Thank you. Item four, question by members of the public, Emma Enning?
Number saved.
Question from members, Emma?
Number saved.
Right, moving on. Relevant updates, government guidance, Beth, all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. On the 1st of October, regulations governing the imposition of pre-commencement conditions came into force. From this date, planning permission may not be granted, subject to a pre-commencement condition, without the written agreement of the applicant to the terms of the condition, except with the exception of specific circumstances. For clarity, a pre-commencement condition for this purpose is one which is imposed on a grant of full planning permission, but not an outline permission, and which must be complied with either before any building or operation comprised in the development is begun, or in the case of a change of use, before the material change of use occurs. The rationale behind this piece of legislation is the hope that local planning authorities will discuss conditions, including any pre-commencement conditions, during the processing of the application, and before a final decision is made. The local planning authority is expected to share with the applicant any draft pre-commencement conditions at the earliest possible opportunity. If the applicant confirms their agreement to a pre-commencement condition in writing, then the pre-commencement condition can be imposed. Where the local planning authority has not been able to obtain written agreement, it can serve a notice under the regulations, which must state the condition, the full reasons for proposing it, and an instruction that any substantive response must be received within ten working days from the date the notice is given. If the local planning authority does not receive a substantive response, the condition can be imposed without the written agreement of the applicant. This essentially means that planning committees can no longer impose pre-commencement conditions. It will therefore be imperative for officers and members to engage early on in the application process, if it is considered that pre-commencement conditions are required. On occasion, there will be times when the committee, upon reflection, would like to see additional condition imposed, which would ordinarily be a pre-commencement condition. In cases such as these, it may be that the desired outcome could be achieved using alternative wording, such as 'prior to any above ground works', or 'prior to occupation', in order for it not to constitute a pre-commencement condition. The appropriateness of this will need to be decided on a case-by-case basis, which highlights the need for early officer-member engagement. If it becomes apparent during a committee meeting that a pre-commencement condition is essential, the committee resolution to approve will need to be subject to a time period for the agreement from the applicant, and a full reason for refusal will need to be drafted by the committee, in the event that the applicant does not agree. The committee would need to be satisfied that, in the absence of this condition, the application would be fundamentally unacceptable, so that a refusal on that basis could be robustly defended at appeal, and I will shortly be circulating a briefing note to all members. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Look forward to the written word. Right, performance against government targets, again, Beth, take us through that, please.
Thank you, Chairman, bit much shorter. So, page five sets out, planning services' performance against the two government targets of speed and quality. You'll note that in both cases, we are meeting our targets. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Moving on to item eight, site inspection arising from this meeting, well, we've had one already, but should there be any site inspections prior to the next meeting required, they'll be held on Tuesday, the 20th of November, at a time to be agreed, normally 10 o'clock. And now we move on to item eight, one, WA 2017 1962, Chert Place Nursery, Tilford Road, Chert. The proposal for the erection of eighteen dwellings with a new access, closure of existing access, associated works following demolition of the existing buildings, and Rachel Callas will introduce this application.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Starting with the location of the site, you'll see two plans on screen for you just here. This red line here, if you outlines the site, and you'll see it's just on the eastern side of Tilford Road. Turning to the aerial photographs, you'll note that the site is largely occupied by existing buildings, they comprise greenhouse-type structures containing a range of bathroom items. The photographs will show you this much better in due course, and a very similar photograph just here. You'll see there's some sparse residential development either side. Turning to the existing site plan, this again gives you an illustration of what you've got on site, and the amount of site which is already occupied by built form. It's worth noting that the vast majority of the site is covered by a lawful development certificate, and that's for storage purposes, and that does fall within a definition of previously developed land. Taking you to some existing site photographs, first of all, the photographs on the scene primarily look towards the site access. Here you've got looking north from the existing access onto Tilford Road. This shows you one of the existing entrances. On your bottom left, you'll see this is the view south from the existing access onto Tilford Road. And on your bottom right of the screen, you'll see the view from the existing access from land to the rear of the site coming, and the road which currently, or access which runs through the site at present. And that includes one of the existing structures on the right-hand side. Here you can see a bit better the existing structures within the site, the top photograph gives you an idea here of the scale and size of some of the buildings there. Just to give you some idea on measurements, the most sizable building on site is Greenhouse Two, which is over 4,000 square metres in area, and 6.7 metres in height, whilst the tallest structure is 10.2 metres in height, which is a large building that occupies a footprint of just under 1,500 metres. Purpose of those is to illustrate that they are quite substantial buildings that exist on site at present. And here you've got a few further photographs where you can see the sort of items that are stored on site. For those of you who went to the site, was that you obviously have a good understanding of exactly how much bathroom items are stored there on site, both inside and outside of the buildings. Turning to the proposal itself, as set out for you, proposed is eighteen dwellings. You'll see these are primarily in the form of detached dwellings, and a couple of semi-detached properties on site. They include two affordable houses, those are semi-detached properties at the front of the site just here. The site does include a local area of play and local equipped area of play, those are both located in this portion of the site just here, that's just on the left as you enter the site from the proposed access. It's worth noting that this access has been relocated further south along the road, so in this direction, and that's pulling it away from the bend just beyond the site. It's worth noting that county highway authorities do consider that an improvement in highway safety terms by relocating that access. There is an existing access into the site just here, at the top of the site, but that would be closed off, although you'll see access would be retained to the properties from the rear. You'll see that each house has quite a generous driveway and hard standing to the front of it, that provides enough parking to comply with our standards. You also see that each dwelling has its own private rear garden, vary in size, but all of them are considered to be appropriate for the size of dwelling proposed. One area highlighted here is a proposed extension to dormouse habitat. The wildlife surveys with the application have confirmed the presence of dormice on site, and therefore the ecology reports have identified a need for additional habitat to be created to compensate for that on site at present. This area falls outside of the application site itself, but is within the applicant's ownership, and as such, you'll note that the recommendation is subject to a legal agreement to secure that area. You'll also note that there is quite an extensive planting proposed along the site boundaries, and that really enhances what is existing on site. In terms of existing trees on site, the vast majority are proposed for retention, and our internal tree officer is confident that can be achieved. Turning to the proposed and existing building footprints, what you'll see on site on the screen here is the proposed layout, however, these dashed lines over the top show you the existing footprints of the buildings, so you note it really is quite substantial compared to that level proposed. Enjoy your attention to the update sheet at this point. If you turn over to page two of that sheet, you'll see that there are some comparison tables provided for you, which help to explain the level of difference between the built form proposed and that which is on site at present. That corrects some of the figures which are in your original officer, in the original agenda report. What is proposed is a 71% reduction in the building footprint, aiming above what's on site now, and in addition, the building volume would be reduced by 57%. As I say, and noting the overall height of existing buildings, you have got one building on site at present, which is 10 metres in height. It's obviously very relevant when you're considering the impact on the green belt, because the principle of redeveloping previously developed land in the green belt is acceptable, where the impact on openness would be reduced over that existing. So this is where these tables are very relevant to assist in your assessment in that respect. Turning now to the proposed elevations, and here you'll see the aerial view, this is looking from the front of the site. This is the proposed access just here. You'll see that there's quite a range of house designs, in fact, there are eight different dwelling designs proposed, and they take their reference from an arts and crafts style, and officers welcome the fact that there's variety in the design of the dwellings, which does reduce any formulaic appearance. This is a further aerial view, this time taken from the rear of the site. Generally speaking, the larger dwellings are positioned towards the rear, and you'll see one such example here. As a guide, the size of the dwellings ranges from two to five bedrooms in number. This shows your selection of some of the proposed elevations, not all on screen, but some of them are here. This really illustrates the type of features and quality that is proposed within a development. You'll see you've got quite substantial chimneys, decorative features around the windows, and a lot of interest generally within the elevations. You also note, just from this screen, the variety in the size, scale, and form of the dwellings that are proposed. Turning now to the proposed street scene, you see two images in front of you. The top proposal shows you the proposed view from the street scene with the frontage landscaping included. Clearly, the purpose of that is to show you that there will be very limited views from the site. The main opportunity for vantage points would be where you'd be creating a new access, where you would have to trim vegetation to ensure necessary visibility, so that would be the key vantage point from public areas. What's also included below, so you can see the design of the houses as they would appear, is the frontage, but without that landscaping. So, there would be landscaping, but that just helps you to understand and visualise the proposed dwellings. Turning to the proposed site sections, again, this illustrates for you the variety in housing types proposed, and the varying heights and form that those dwellings take. The top section, which you can see here, is looking from the central access which runs through the site, and looking north, whereas at the bottom, you can see the view looking You'll see there are site variances and levels through the site, and that's reflected in the heights, and the heights of the buildings proposed. You have some further site sections going across the site, and again, you'll see this is where the biggest change in levels does occur. This is taken from fairly rear, in rear position in the site, looking forwards. This is the access road here, which runs central, and the view here looks towards the rear of the site. I can now take you through the determining issues for the application, starting with the matters of principle and technical opinion. Starting with the principle of development and the reuse of brownfield land. In accordance with SP2, with the spatial strategy, it does state that the council should be maximising opportunities for the redevelopment of suitable brownfield sites for housing. Terms of loss of employment land, officers have reviewed the material submitted, and the prospect of the site being reused for employment purposes in its current form is very unlikely. Part of that is due to the location of the site, and part of it is due to the size and nature of the structures that are on site at present. The proposal does include a loss of agricultural land. There are a few parcels of agricultural land which fall outside of the certificate, they're shown for you on the update sheet. However, the size of those would not provide a viable use in terms of agricultural purposes, and as such, there's no objection raised to that loss. Turning to archaeology and sustainable drainage, both matters are, further details are secured by condition, however, officers are satisfied that acceptable details could be secured. As regards highway safety and parking, as noted previously, the proposed access would deliver improvements in highway safety terms, aiming above the existing position, and there is existing sufficient driveway proposed for each dwelling to meet the council's parking standards within each plot. As regards the housing mix, the proposed mix does not fully comply with the SMA, in particular, there are no one-bedroom units proposed, however, noting that there are a good range of two-to-five bedroom properties that are proposed on site, so it's a matter to be weighed into the balance in that respect. And to affordable housing, there are two affordable houses proposed on site, that is below the policy requirement of 30%, however, viability information has been submitted, which justifies that amount, and it's worth noting that that has been negotiated above the original proposal, which was zero. Turning to matters of contaminated land, that again is a matter which, you will note, relevant conditions have been applied. Officers are satisfied there'd be no likely significant effect on the SPAs. As a biodiversity, the key point to note is the requirement to secure additional mitigation of site for dormice, and that would be secured via the legal agreement. Infrastructure contributions, you'll note the applicants have agreed heads of terms, and again, legal agreement will be the subject of any resolution to secure those relevant Turning to matters of judgment, firstly, lay our lay impact on the green belt and very special circumstances. In terms of the impact on the green belt, the redevelopment of previously developed land is considered acceptable in green belt terms, given that the proposed development would not have any greater impact on the openness than the existing development. That's having regard to factors such as the extent of built form, and the amount, and the footprint on site at the moment. However, there are some sites which are shown on your update sheet that are outside of the certificate, or a few pockets of land around the site boundaries. As they do not benefit from the lawful development certificate, and are not areas of previously developed land, development of those particular parts of the site would constitute inappropriate development. However, officers are satisfied that there are very special circumstances which outweigh that harm, and specifically that relates to the reduction in built form on the site. Moving on, the next matter is the impact on the AOMB, AGLV, and visual amenity. You are seeing from the presentation the quality of the dwellings proposed, and given the existing position on site, officers consider that the proposal would preserve the landscape character and be acceptable in visual terms. To the location of development, this has regard to the presence of other dwellings nearby, you know, that there is quite a low density of development around there, and the site is fairly remote from any services. Officers' advice is that the site would constitute, or would not be, or would be isolated for the purposes of the MPPF, so that is a matter to weigh into the overall balance. However, in terms of looking at the overall sustainability of the site, that needs to be balanced against the reuse of brownfield land, which is considered to be sustainable in its own right. Turning to the impact on residential amenity, officers are satisfied sufficient distance is provided to neighbouring dwellings to avoid any adverse impacts. The proposal would protect existing trees and provide enhancements for additional planting, and the proposed dwellings would provide a suitable standard of accommodation for future occupants. And now just turn your attention to the end of your update sheet for the recommendations set out there. Noting a few additions to drawing numbers and amended condition one, revised recommendation A, on page three, that's subject to amended condition one and conditions two to 29 on the agenda report, and a section 106 agreement to secure on-site affordable housing, off-site dormice mitigation habitat, contributions towards education, transport infrastructure, the upgrading of leisure facilities, and the upgrading of facilities at French and Great Pond, that permission be granted. Recommendation B states that in the event the requirements of recommendation A are not met, that permission be refused. Thank you.
Rachel, thank you very much indeed. Move on to public speaking, I've got two supporters who are going to share the time, Mr Caldwell, who's Bell Cornwall Planner and Agent, and James Green, William Lessford Architects. Gentlemen. We have four minutes from when you start speaking, gentlemen.
Lovely, thank you, Chairman. I'll give you a quick planning perspective on it, just on the previously developed land, which I see is on the update sheet. Let's not forget, this is a single planning unit, it's in a single ownership. The technicality of the previously developed land comes down to the lawful development certificate of the buildings, but it is a bit of a technicality, and also note that of that non-preservedly developed land, most of that remains landscaping and gardens, rather than part of the proposed building. So it's a pretty unique site, to be honest. It's got a bespoke use, bespoke buildings, and it stores toilet fittings and bathroom fittings. There's not much employment on the land, it's very low in terms of employment, so it's a bit of an anomaly, really. It's also got a unique factor that it really does cover the site considerably, much more than most usual buildings, 62% coverage, is extremely high, and obviously by definition detracts from the openness of the green belt. So we think it's a good opportunity to deliver new residential development whilst improving not only the openness of the green belt, but the appearance of the site as well. Obviously, these are the two important distinct tests for the committee, they've got common ground to some extent, because obviously a substantial reduction in floor area, which is 71%, as in the update sheet, and volume 57% reduction, these along with obviously the design of the dwellings will satisfy the AOMB and the green belt tests together, even though they are different tests. I think it's worth pointing out to you, or reiterating, that there's very little public interest in this application, in fact, of the public interest, more of it is support than objections, and even the objectors, the majority of them have no problem with the principle of the development. I also note that the parish council is now neutral in its stance. So it delivers housing market, it delivers a couple of affordable units, and it delivers mitigation against the impact, so in context of all the planning tests, we think they're satisfied, so hopefully you can support it from the planning perspective. So, over to the architect for his view.
Thank you, Nick. Good evening, Mr Chair, members of the planning committee. Our vision for Chert Place, currently, oh, sorry, a big apart. Currently extensively covered by unsightly former horticultural glasshouses that have long exceeded their use, the proposed application scheme presents a compelling opportunity to achieve the combined benefits of a considerable visual enhancement of the application site, much-needed housing, and a positive landscape outcome. Well concealed, behind existing hedging, and with discreet access off Tilford Road, the scheme design proposes an informal arrangement of eighteen individually designed and high-quality homes, set within generous gardens. Designed in the arts and crafts style, of which there are so many fine examples in rural Surrey, the house designs pay homage in particular to the greatest exponent of that period's style, Sir Edwin Lutchins. Fittingly, it is known that Lutchins was a close personal friend of former Prime Minister David Lloyd George, who himself was a previous owner of the site. Throughout the design process, careful attention has been given to faithfully achieving the architectural characteristics, proportions, and features that are so distinctive of the arts and crafts style. Each house entrance is intended to convey its own sense of arrival and identity, with a front door often set within a surround of richly detailed brickwork. The distinctive sense of solidity is achieved by the high-quality brick elevations, well anchored down by steeply pitched plain clay tiled roofs with splayed sprockets echoing ancient tiled barns found in Surrey. The original houses of this period did not, of course, stand in isolation, but were anchored within the imaginative hard and soft landscaping of an English country garden. The application scheme will also be developed with similar care and attention to its natural surroundings. Shall I continue, or what? Is that okay?
If you could just wind up fairly calmly, please.
The application scheme will also be developed with similar care and attention to its natural surroundings, with the long-term setting in mind. It is intended that as the landscaping matures, only restricted glimpses of mellow red chimneys and gables will be enticingly visible above the hedge lines and between trees, as the dwellings nestle into and become part of the landscape of rural Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Rand.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I put my hand up very swiftly, because I'm afraid I have another appointment in Haysmere in half an hour, so I should be leaving in 10 minutes. I'm sorry if my vote won't count, I hadn't, wouldn't make, I thought it best to come than not to, at least I could speak. I, sorry, it's gone, anyway. This is a very interesting site, it could almost be classified as a tourist opportunity, and I wonder if we could put a condition on that they must please retain the hanging of coloured toilets in the trees, I've never seen that before, and I think it remarkably attractive. It is an attractive site, the houses are very nice, very varied. I don't agree they're over generous gardens, depends which decade you look at, but they're enough. I think it's quite pleasant, and it's certainly better than it is at the moment. If I were still here when we take a vote, I'd vote for it, unless I hear compelling arguments to the contrary. I do wish, however, that the fact that a certificate of lawfulness was granted 14 years ago now makes it a brownfield site as opposed to an agricultural site, because from a standpoint of pure common sense, doesn't look like that to me. But since we all are obliged to grant planning permission to it, because of its status, then this is a good solution. Oh, lastly, I didn't actually believe the Lutchins period was the apogee of garage design. Oh, lastly, I don't actually believe the Lutchins period was the apogee of garage design. I think it's a shame the garage doors on this estate are redolent of the Kingston bypass and were probably built before the war, the Second World War, that is. I wouldn't buy a house with garage doors like that, but otherwise they're very attractive. Thank you.
Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is a generally good design and it's definitely necessary to, or good idea, to replace the greenhouses. I would argue slightly with the officers in saying that greenhouses are in fact a solid obstacle to view. Really, they're, you can see through the glass reasonably well. You might not like what you can see inside, but you can see through the glass. I would be in, this update sheet is interesting. I would be interested to see if the officers have an overlay of these areas which are not covered by the certificate of lawfulness over the site layout with the houses. Because looking at it, I would say actually that especially near the front, there are chunks of land here which are not covered and which should be returned to the Green Belt, which in fact it's proposed to build on. I was not aware of this until I saw it earlier, otherwise I'd have raised the issue. But for instance, I would think it might make sense to swap where the lap is for where the two affordable homes are. Because clearly that corner is quite significantly outside the certificate of lawfulness. And also, two of the houses on the other side of that particular little drive are halfway into the Green Belt area. So that and the other side, where there's another great big chunk of land which is not covered by the certificate of lawfulness, would appear to me to cut through the two houses which are being developed the other side on the right-hand side of the excess road as we're looking at it. Now, I can see the other two areas which are alongside this site. The one on the right-hand side, that looks pretty accurate compared to the map that's just been given to us. The one on the other side, though, actually is a straight line from the corner. The kink in the side, again, a straight line down to the far end, which actually chops off part of the first house on the, around that bend. So although I'm, you know, I'm generally happy with this, I think that there's some errors have crept in somewhere. So I think perhaps it should be looked at again. I did initially think that actually eighteen was pushing it a bit, considering this is AOMB and everything should be quite far spread out. I would, in fact, I would like to see a minimum plot size suggested in our Part Two of the local plan for A and O B developments. And that would solve a lot of the problem of houses being squeezed up together. So at the moment, I'm fairly ambivalent, but I'd be interested to hear what the other members have to say.
Rachel.
Thank you, yes. If I can just provide a bit more detail about your point about the certificate and some of the buildings falling outside of that. I'm sorry, I haven't got the actual plan on the update sheet on the screen. But what I have got for you on the screen, and I'll talk you through it, is a comparison between the existing and proposed building footprints. You're quite right that some of the dwellings do fall on land which is agricultural and not within the previously developed land. As you acknowledge, that front of the site there where the proposed affordable housing units are, that is on agricultural land, not covered by a certificate. And yes, you may well be right that there's a slight overlap again on that corner. The position on that is this. So whilst in Green Belt terms, land which is previously developed, starting point is that is acceptable where it has no greater impact on openness. We then have to turn in terms of the other parts of the land to very special circumstances. So the development on those parts of the land, and that includes even where it's garden space, that is by definition inappropriate development. So what you'll see in the report is officers have considered whether there are any very special circumstances to justify that. In this case, we consider there are very special circumstances in that the overall, there's an overall reduction in the impact on openness. And that's resulting from a loss, from a reduction in the built form, reduction in footprint and those various points. It is very much a judgment for you to come to. Certainly, your point about the greenhouses is very valid. They are see-through. Whereas if you look to the buildings on-site, they reckon they have a very different impact to the greenhouses. However, given the significance of the reduction in volume and footprint, that needs to be taken into account which is more harmful and that is very much a view for you to come to. Turning to the point about the affordable units and the lap, which I'll turn to the proposed layout plan at this point. I think your suggestion is that actually if we relocate the two, it's right end of the site, sorry. We could relocate these here which fall outside of the certificate and switch them over with the play area here. Yes, there's clearly other alternatives which could have come to us. What I would say is that there is benefit in having the areas of play here. They're much more centrally located in terms of access for the properties and those viewing through the site. And the other advantage to consider is that this is going to be the most visible part of the site. Because that's where you need to propose the access and you need to trim back the vegetation to achieve those visibility displays. Actually, an absence of significant development, such as housing in that point, does have benefits in terms of the wider visual impact of the scheme and the impact on openness. So very much it's a view for you to come to. However, there is a case there, if you agree, that very special circumstances could apply, such that you could consider approving development if you're so minded. Thank you.
Councilor Rand.
Thank you. I know it's my second bite, but very briefly, I agree with what the officers have said. I appreciate Brian's point, but surely overall, this is a better situation regarding green space. And one should just regard the land which is not lawfully brownfield. I'm not expressing this very well, but I think you see what I'm driving at. The, it's less in air than the green areas we've got in this proposed application. So I would take a balanced view of that and say it doesn't really matter precisely where it is. We should put the lap in the right place and we should put the affordable housing in the right place and that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Inchbald.
Thank you, Chairman. I rather agree with Councilor Rand. We've got to consider whether it does any harm. And quite honestly, it really doesn't do any harm. It fits well with the rest of the application site. And I really am not going to lose even a second sleep over it being outside the certificate of lawfulness area. On another point, I'm just rather disappointed that the dormice aren't represented here this evening.
Perhaps they are, but stealing your line, the eyes have it. Just make a few points, if I may. The officers mentioned the fact it's not compliant because there aren't any one-bedroom units. I think that's only a good thing in this particular area and I would have fought against that one, certainly. Sad that we've only seen two affordable units on this site, but that has been explained quite clearly. The affordable houses, I would like to have seen three and had a thought of it earlier. I'd have got rid of the leap and the lap and put another house there, but the officers have explained that. Looking at isolation, I've already mentioned that because we've got Hale House Lane on the other side of the road. You've got the Rushmore Development, which is fairly extensive. So I don't really find it isolated. Very interested in the number of movements that are annotated on this development. Of course, when I look at some of the other developments that are coming forward, I shall take a very keen interest in how those numbers relate to the number of houses. That's another matter. Policy TD1 of the Local Plan 2018 requires development to be of a high-quality design and to be well related in size, scale and character to its surroundings. And I think this does so immensely. I find the designs really to be outstanding. And having seen some of this developers work elsewhere, it is high-quality and to a high standard. And our housing officer also, the design officer, thinks they're of a high standard. So listen very carefully to the brownfield site arguments and everything else. I think this will actually make that bit of the AOMB, AGLV rather better. When I moved to Houndhead thirty years ago, I thought those greenhouses, which might be see-through to a degree, but they are dirty and I'm amazed they're still standing, quite amazed. So my views are that this is an acceptable standard. I look at the 106 statements and I asked the local member to comment on the bus stop as there are no bus routes other than school buses in that part of the world. They're about two miles away, so I look forward to that. But I think I'd like to have seen the 106 money distributed somewhere else. Thank you. Councilor Adams, do you want to come back?
Yes, I was going to come back. Well, two things. One is, I think, at the end of the day, it depends on how strongly we feel about defending the Green Belt and the AOMB. And if we feel in this case that, you know, these houses are of better benefit than that defence, that's entirely up to the committee. I'm coming back, though, basically in respect of the S106 agreement. I agree that I think it should be reviewed. So I'm not quibbling with the overall amount. I'm just quibbling with some of the allocations. And I believe that the officer is happy to have another round of discussions on how that money should be allocated. Obviously, the items relating to Surrey are entirely up to them, that's it. It's the item relating to the Heathland Hub, the wooden bus shelter and the dry-side toilet upgrade in Hazelmead, which we would like to review. Thank you.
Yeah. Rachel.
Thank you, yes. Just to answer a couple of questions regarding the section 106 agreement. I think specifically the bus stop is proposed as an environmental improvement and it is specifically for those school buses and the sort of community buses that go forwards. However, the nature of the local town this application has been in, we're quite happy to have further liaise further with infrastructure providers to see whether or not these are the most appropriate projects in consultation with yourselves, the local ward members and the committee chairman, if that's what you prefer. It's worth considering that these are carefully justified in terms of contributions and it should, would be worth considering that, that'd be worth having if these are the only identified projects and if these are justified. However, if through those discussions you do identify there are alternative projects which would better suit and relate to the development, by all means, we can have that discussion and consider whether that's the case. Thank you. In fact, I'd just add to that. I propose that the resolution in that case is subject to further discussion with the infrastructure providers to confirm the most appropriate contributions in liaison with the local ward members and chairman, if that's a preference, by all means, yes.
And the parish councils, Rachel? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Councilor King.
Thank you, Chairman. I completely agree with the local ward member on the section 106. I thought it didn't look completely as appropriate as it should do for that site, so I welcome that agreement. I have a funny evening because I also find myself in agreement with Councilor Rand, which is very unusual on a matter of design. I couldn't agree with him more about the garages where they're integral with the properties. Thank you very much. That one's perfect. Actually, it's a perfect picture. I agree, those are Kingston bypass garage doors. I just think they're wrong in that style of building. They screamed at me. But the other comment I want to make as well is on the two central pictures there, both of them are showing a slab roof porch as such, which is a bit nineteen-sixties, you know, something. It doesn't look quite right to me. I just thought someone could have put some better sort of weather protection or porch protection on those front doors. But apart from those comments, I think it's a better use of the site and I'm happy with it. Thank you.
Councilor Adams.
Not particularly applicable to this, but I note the chimneys and would hope that the developers of Aaron's Hill would look at them too before they decide on their design.
Totally agree with that. Sorry. Members, anyone else? Did, Lewis, did you want to come in? You? Okay, you've covered it off. Right. Thank you very much indeed. I think we'll move to the recommendation, members. Recommendation A, that's subject to the amended conditions one and condition two to twenty-nine on the agenda report and a 106 agreement to secure on-site affordable housing, off-site dormice mitigation habitat, contribution towards education, transport, infrastructure, the upgrading of leisure facilities and the upgrading of facilities at French and Great Pond, subject to further discussions with the infrastructure providers, Surrey County Council, local councils and the parish council on the allocations, permission be granted. Is that as you wish it to read? Thank you very much indeed. So permission be granted. Those in favour of granting permission, please show. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Recommendation B, that in the event that the requirements of recommendation A are not met within six months of the date, the resolution to grant planning permission, then permission be refused with the three reasons as noted in the update sheet. Those in favour, please show. Unanimous. That's it. All, thank you very much. Safe journey home.